Order the City of Seaside City Council and the Success Agency to the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Seaside, regular five P M. Meeting on Thursday, December the fourth, two thousand twenty-five. City Hall Chambers will come to order. Thank you. A roll call, please.
Council and agency member Miller.
Here.
Council and agency member Burks.
Here.
Council and agency member Garcia Arasola.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vice Chair Pacheco. Mayor Chair Oglesby.
I hear.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. I will ask a council member Alexis Garcia Zola to leave and pledge allegiance. And we will have a moment of silence. Thank you. Next, we have item number four is review of the agenda. Mr. City Manager, any corrections or deletions or additions to the agenda?
Mayor, there are no requests to changes to the agenda.
Uh, thank you so much. I do believe we will have a recess around the seven thirty hour if needed. Uh, we go to item number five, which is public comment, public comment. I heard from the members of the public, public comment is open. Uh, members have up to three minutes to make their public comments on items not on the agenda. We will hear items on the agenda when the item is called. It is also the time to make comments on presentations. For the benefit of the public, it would be helpful if you state your name. Public comment is open.
Please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or press star nine if you're calling from a phone. Peter Kaiser, you now have the floor to make public comment.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Yes, this is Peter Kaiser. I'm a longtime resident of Seaside. And as there was just a moment of silence, I would like to offer a prayer. Lord, we adore you and glorify you. Thank you for your providence, provision, mercies and grace. And sending Jesus to die for our sins so that we may be in heaven with him forever. Thank you, God, for blessing the pilgrims who faithfully stayed and served even though they lost one half of their members died during the first winter. And in their Mayflower compact, they wrote an agreement to be governed under the laws of God and to share the gospel with the local Indians and others. And they were even offered a chance to go back on the ship to England and they all refused and stayed and served. And Lord, protect the preborn babies from the abortion mills like Planned Parenthood next door on Hillby. Bless the prayer vigil there tonight at six P M. You're invited to go six P M. On Hillby. And keep preborn babies safe until they are born. And we are very sad that Margaret Sanger, the founder of Planned Parenthood, had a goal to get rid of the Negro race. And unfortunately, two thirds of the babies about to be born uh, from African American mothers die in abortion clinics. Lord, please keep all the public funding away from abortions like Planned Parenthood. And help them to close down like Santa Cruz and Gilroy Planned Parenthood has closed already and forty-one. Um, about forty-one total clinics have closed from abortion mills. And also bless the streets of Bethlehem pageant. It's tonight, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, four through seven, December at Blanco and San Vicente in Salinas at the First Baptist Church, showing the Christmas story uh, li- like live with singing and actors and animals and like the town of Bethlehem as Jesus is the reason for the season. Also, please sign the petitions for the I voter requiring people to have a government photo I D. To register to vote. And also, please sign the Safe Prop thirteen petition to require all raises in fees and taxes to have at least a two thirds vote instead of a fifty percent vote. So God bless you during this Christmas season and go with Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or press star nine if calling from a phone. And you now have the floor to make public comment. And you have the floor to make public comment. And you have the floor to make public comment. No other hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you so much. Seeing no one else here, no one else desiring to speak on any public comment, we will move on and close public comment. Move to item number six, which is public agency communications. I don't see any other pub- public agencies here, so we will go to item A. Seaside News Broadcast Upcoming Seaside Events.
Let's dip into this week's edition of Seaside City News, covering more of the events happening this December. Thursdays in Seaside means it's time for the Seaside Farmers Market at the Laguna Grande Park. The winter market runs from three to six P M. With box distribution happening from four thirty to six or until the boxes run out. Come after three P M. To pick up a ticket, reserve your spot. It's first come, first served. Don't miss it. Fresh food, friendly faces and community connection every Thursday in Seaside. Join FOSPA on Saturday, November twenty-second at Capra Park and Martin Park and on the twenty-ninth at Fariones Park for a day of service and outdoor fun. For more information, including future workdays and locations, visit Friends of Seaside Parks dot org. As a service this rainy season, the City of Seaside has set up two sandbag filling stations for residents. The first filling station is located at the Seaside Fire Station at sixteen thirty-five Broadway Avenue, behind the station at the Broadway entrance. The second station is in the empty lot on Canyon Del Ray between Chili's Restaurant and the Laguna Grande Park. Residents may take up to ten sandbags per household. Due to possible weather conditions and staff dispatching, city staff may not be available to assist in filling sandbags. For more information, contact the Public Works Department at eight three one eight nine nine six eight three five. This December, the City of Seaside invites you to a very special celebration. The fiftieth Community Holiday Luncheon hosted by the Older Adults Program. Join us on December twentieth at the Old Meyer Center's Laguna Grande Hall. Doors open at ten thirty A M. And a delicious holiday lunch will be served at twelve. Admission is free, but tickets are required. Each person may pick up up to four tickets beginning December first at the Old Meyer Center. Please remember, all recipient names must be provided when you pick up tickets. Celebrate fifty years of community connection and holiday cheer. For more information, call eight three one eight nine nine six eight zero zero. The Seaside Fire Department is spreading holiday cheer, one gift at a time. Now through Wednesday, December seventeenth, we're collecting new unwrapped toys to brighten the season for local children right here in our community. Drop off your donations at the Seaside Fire Department located at sixteen thirty-five Broadway Avenue. Each toy makes a difference. To learn more, call eight three one eight nine nine six seven nine zero. Join us in giving local families a happier holiday. Donate today. Get ready to shine, Seaside. The Neighborhood Improvement Commission, in partnership with the Parks and Recreation Commission, is excited to announce the annual December Holiday Lights Contest. Think your house is the brightest, most festive spot on the block? Now's your chance to prove it. The contest is open to all seaside residents and entering is easy. But don't wait. The deadline to enter is December eleventh at five P M. Whether you're competing or casting your vote for your favorite display, head to B I T dot L Y forward slash lights twenty twenty-five for all the details. Let's light up Seaside together. Get ready, Seaside. Join us on the City Hall lawn on Friday, December fifth from six to nine P M. For the annual Winter Wonderland and Tree Lighting Ceremony. This festive celebration will include snow, a petting zoo, horse carriage rides, arts and crafts, bounce houses, live entertainment, and a very special visit from Santa Claus. This event is free to the community, so there's no reason this side of a reindeer stampede to miss out. For more information, please call eight three one eight nine nine six eight zero zero. Seaside, are you ready for a magical morning? Join us on Saturday, December thirteenth from nine to eleven A M. For a holiday favorite, Cereal with Santa. Bring the whole family to the Old Meyer Center and kick off your day with a cozy breakfast, sweet treats, and of course, a special visit from Santa himself. It's a perfect way to celebrate the season, snap some festive photos and make memories that last all year long. Don't miss it. We appreciate you tuning in to Seaside City News, where we work to include, innovate and inspire. We'll be back with more exciting events to share with you later this December. Until then, be safe, live fully and enjoy all our city has to offer. Thank you, Seaside.
Wow, so much stuff going on in Seaside. I don't know who that announcer is, but he sure sounds good. So we appreciate, we appreciate him. We appreciate it. We're going to item number seven, which is consent agenda. Item seven A, approved minutes from November twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, regular meeting. B, approve and file city checks. C, approve and file success agency checks. D, review the success agency to the redevelopment agency at the City of Seaside Recognize Obligation Payment Schedule, ROPS. Year twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-seven and administrative budget for the period of January, uh, July first, two thousand twenty-six to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section three, four, one, seven, seven. E, accept and file the cash and investment report for the City of Seaside and the Success Agency to the Redevelopment Agency at the City of Seaside for the quarter ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. F, approve or proclamation recognizing December seventh as National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. G, approve a co-sponsorship and fee waiver from the Action Council Building Healthy Communities Monterey County Black Caucus for costs associated with the two thousand twenty-six Martin Luther King Junior March and Program at the Old Meyer Center on January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-six in the amount of six thousand four hundred and one dollar and seventy-five cent. H, approve a co-sponsorship and fee waiver from the Action Council Building Healthy Communities for costs associated with the use of Laguna, Laguna Grande Hall and kitchen for the annual seaside youth leadership summit on Saturday, December twentieth, two thousand twenty-five in the amount of five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. I approve a mayor's youth fund contribution request of three thousand dollars from the Seaside Tenant Association at Hamilton Ellis and Martin Plaza to assist with the costs associated with their youth annual Christmas holiday party on December twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, J, adopt the resolution cancelling, cancelling the January first, two thousand twenty-six regular city hall and city council meeting. K, adopt a resolution approving the annual program compliance report in support of projects funded by Measure X and authorizing staff to submit the report to the Transportation Agency for Monterey County. L, adopt a resolution increasing the Hillby Avenue Traffic Commute Construction Contract with Monterey Peninsula Engineering for a amount not to exceed seventy-three thousand dollars for additional traffic commute improvements on Sonoma Avenue. That concludes the read. Now the consent agenda, is there any item that anyone on the dais would like to pull off the consent agenda? L. Like to pull L? Okay. Is there any item, anyone from the public would like to pull off the consent agenda? Anyone online?
Yes. Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
No, do. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to pull the request for I, I can't, I can't recall the, the item number, but the, the mayor's funds request. I yield the rest of my time.
There was, um, there was.
All right.
Was it just two? Just the one? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open it up for public comment. The consent agenda minus I and L, open up the public comment on the consent agenda.
You now have the floor to make your public comment.
Sorry, that was my thing. My apologies. I, I didn't mean to raise my hand on this item.
It's okay. Thank you. Nothing further on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Bringing it back to the public comments closed on our consent items. Uh, bringing it back to the dais, what is the will of the council?
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
They properly moved in second to approve the consent agenda, which does not include I or L. All those in favor using ruck sign voting, which is I.
I.
Nays have the same right. Abstentions. There are none. Eyes have it motion carried. Uh, we will go to item number seven. I approve the mayor's youth fund contribution request for three thousand dollars from the Seaside Tenant Association that Hamilton Ellis and Martin Plaza to assist with costs associated with their youth annual Christmas holiday party on December twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, public comment, uh, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, here to discuss or answer questions on that is Keon Higgins, Recreation Superintendent.
City Council, members of the public, uh, this is item seven I. This is the second request. So last year, um, the Hem Plaza made a request for three thousand dollars for two thousand twenty-four. This is the exact same application as last year of three thousand dollars covering their holiday party. It's covering a few items, utensils to tour distribution, uh, music and activities for the residents of Hem Plaza. And of course, they qualify, a nonprofit organization over at Hem and covering all residents of Seaside. And I know that the money policy, fund policy is going, undergoing some changes, uh, but this is qualify for the existing policy. And I will say that the, the closing report from last year, they submitted within sixty days. So they're following all the requirements for the youth fund policy. I don't remember hearing a comment or question from, uh, public comments. I'm not really sure how to answer, um, in, in, in the individual.
No, that's fine. You're doing fine.
Okay.
It's fine. You're doing fine. Okay, thank you so much. We'll open up public comment on, uh, seven I. Public comments open.
Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. I pulled this because, um, I find it really, um, great that we do have other entities that are coming in to, uh, private entities to help those that are in need. Um, this particular apartment complex serves over a hundred and ninety residents, including seniors, single parents, low income families and dozens of children who call the community home. The celebration is just not a holiday gathering. It is a stabilization and unifying moment for a community that faces real barriers to belong, belonging, safety and social connections. I wanted to take the opportunity to give this dais a chance to really invest in programs like this, especially when you start seeing a trend when they're asking for these types of um, donations on a yearly basis. I understand that the, the fire department also donates toys there. So the fact that we're already providing um, aid on that front, perhaps it would behoove us to carve out part of the C B G uh, grant or that percentage that the council has now taken back, um, and, and include this organization in that. Um, there are several other organizations that also ask yearly. And so in order to have an opportunity for, for them to have sustainable, um, funding, we would think that we would want to, um, support them on a larger scale to where we start including these individuals in our budget so that we're not exhausting these funds uh, when we have new, uh, organizations or other initiatives that come down the pipeline. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or press star nine if you're calling from a phone. Nothing further on Zoom.
Are you talking to me? Okay, I'm, okay. I'm trying to make sure. So no one else there? Okay. Uh, thank, thank you so much. Public comment is closed. Bringing it back to the dais, what is the will of the council move approval?
Second.
Probably moved in second that we approve item seven I. On a question. All those in favor using ruck sign voting, which is I. Nays have the same right. Abstentions, here none, eyes have it motion carry. We go to seven L, adopt a resolution increasing the Hillby Avenue Traffic Commute Construction Contract with Monterey Peninsula Engineering for a amount not to exceed seventy-three thousand dollars for additional traffic commute improvements on Sonoma Avenue. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, uh, for this item. Thomas Corman, Public Works Director will present.
Yes, good evening, uh, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, this, item seven L here is we're asking for a, uh, adopted resolution to increase, uh, the contract for Monterey Peninsula Engineering, who did the work on the Hillby uh, Avenue Traffic Calming for additional work, um, on Sonoma. So that's in front of the, the D Lamp School. So I'll go through some of the little bit of the history of how we kind of arrived at this. So, excuse me. There we go. Um, so it's just a little bit of a, bit of a background is on April, uh, the city council, uh, you all approved a construction contract with M P E for those improvements. Um, and that's, but, but that scope basically in, included the installation of the, the, the speed cushions or the speed humps that you see out there, the red curb, a key intersections, the center line striping, the edge line striping, everything that's out there. Um, and then of course the slurry seal on lower Hillby. Uh, that construction is now complete. The project has not been closed out, but there are some remaining funds in there. Um, so we had a couple of additional sections, uh, you know, the San Pablo project was bid. Uh, the Baker Street that was added to this project. Um, and then we had the opportunity to add, uh, this section that has been in the works and designed for some, some time. So this is in front of the Dual Language Academy, uh, Monterey Peninsula. And there's similar improvements. The work is very similar. So what we did was we, the, the project was not closed out with M P E. So we went to them and say, this is an opportunity. Can you fit this in your schedule? Uh, we are really originally trying to do it in the Thanksgiving area, but we could, Thanksgiving break, we couldn't get that in there. Um, this has been, we've been working with the school district on this. Um, in addition, it has been before, uh, traffic advisory committee. And so the proposed work is on Sonoma between Yosemite and Meskell. And basically it's two sets of speed cushions, much like you see on Hillby, uh, and San Pablo. It includes the center line striping, the edge line striping, the red curb at the entrance. And there's some additional signage to prevent basically left turns, uh, during school hour. So it's, it's all improved safety and reduced speeds in front of the school. And so to reduce costs and to prevent basically bidding it, it's similar bid items. We went to M P E and we said, okay, can you use these bid items? In addition, of course, there's a remobilization cost in there. They provided us with this cost proposal to do this work. And so that, that comes to seventy-three thousand, uh, not to exceed seventy-three thousand. And so this is what it looks like as far as the project scope. Um, there you'll see, uh, Yosemite on the left side of the street. And just going down Sonoma, basically there's, there's the speed humps there. It gets improvements, improved crosswalks there. Um, but basically look like curb outlets or curb extensions. Those are basically painted in there. Um, and then the next slide basically shows all the way up to Meskell. There's the, the second set of speed humps that will go in there, the center line striping and the edge line striping to guide people down there. So we worked closely with the school on this. Um, they've done, uh, improvements recently to their park. They've done improvements recently to their parking lot to basically facilitate the drop off and pickup of students. And so we, we know these will work great, basically with their improvements there. And so that's we're asking for a resolution to increase the contract with MPE. So we can implement these during what's I guess known as the Christmas or holiday break. So, yeah. So that's our recommendations. Any further questions?
Thank you so much. Any questions by councilman Miller?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. So what was the original contract amount? Remember?
I don't have that with me. Yeah.
500,000?
It could have been. I can't say for sure. I'd have to look that up.
Was there a change order on the original work?
Was there? I think there already was several change. There were several deductions and additions as we changed some of the work on Hillby. And I can't say specifically what that was or what those amounts.
I mean, they were the us discussing coming back and having more money onto the job.
Right.
And so I guess my question is that I get what we're trying to do. They've already done the work here. Sonoma Street is not, wasn't in the original scope, right?
No, no.
So it's not the original scope. Doesn't it benefit the city to go back out to bid for that street to make sure that the 73,000 is truly a fair price?
It could. I don't want to say it wouldn't. So it could. We're using the similar unit prices. So if we did go out to bid, there's, there's a chance that we get higher prices or lower prices. The advantage is that, you know, we're working, we work, we have a level of comfort with MPE. We have established bid prices. Basically, we're basically paying a remobilization and utilizing those existing unit prices. So so there, there, there could be an opportunity that, that we could get lower prices. Yes.
But it would be a more complex process. It seems like.
It would, it would take longer. Yes.
On, I think it was on La Salle, up towards the school on La Salle, the school that we did some work around a school there. If you remember, I believe you worked for the city then and did this, I believe that if I remember correctly, the school district contributed some funds to that.
Okay, yes. So I have driven on that section. No, and I, I'm familiar with it, but I did not work for the city at that time.
I guess the premise of that question is that is the school district, although, I mean, in the staff report and in your own presentation, you mentioned the school district and the school several times. So they're just on board with this or they're willing to?
Yeah, they're not contributing any funds if that's your question.
They're just, they just, okay, this design is fine for us and we're okay with it.
Yes, that's right. That's correct.
And I was trying to get at if there was other instances in front of schools where the school district did contribute. And I believe that, I believe that the La Salle one, they did.
I don't, I don't have any knowledge of that. And that, that could be the case. In other agencies that I have worked for, I have not seen contributions from, from schools. You know, it's typically we would get a grant from Caltrans with Safe Routes.
And my last question is, is there a parking issue in this neighborhood on this street here? By that, I mean, are there like excess cars to number of spots?
If you don't, if you don't know, it seemed like you're, if you don't know, just.
I would say, no, I would say at times of the day, you're correct.
Is this avoiding any parking?
No, it's not. No, no, nothing that we would do out of the ordinary with the red curb around the driveway entrances. Right.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Mayor Porten.
Just. I would assume if you did go back out for bids, that would take staff time because you would have to meet with the potential contractors and the mailing. So that would cost not necessarily more or less dollars, but definitely more staff time in order to proceed in advance, correct?
That's correct. Yes.
So in, in, and this is, they're working, I'm not sure about this one. They're working on a project concurrently to make this work smoothly and effectively and efficiently. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah.
And then just. I'll just say it now rather than, I'm all for this because I see the need, the need. And we're trying to work with streets in the school district area. But in all honestly, I don't remember going and I'm on the board of the traffic advisory. I didn't, I did not remember any part of this going this because I know I asked Councilperson Burks for input on this area. And at that time, things have changed. So I think there's a need and a purpose and a goal, which is all very positive. And getting it done by that school break window.
Yes.
Helps with the traffic when the kids come back to school.
That's our objective.
Right. And so that's, that's a good thing as well. The timing is really important. That's all. I think, I think it's important that we do it.
Anyone else? I guess I'll just ask the city manager. Isn't this a savings? I mean, if you had to go out and rebid this thing, staff time, rebid it. And, and I thought the engineer just said, we understand a unit price, so we're getting the same price as he was doing Hillby. But we're saving everything else. So that's, that's what I'm looking for. Is this a savings or not?
In my professional recommendation, it would be a savings. Usually mobilization is one of those areas that contractors can increase. And that's already set with this project, including the unit prices, which have already been accepted by the city.
And, and that's if you could find someone that's willing to do that for the unit, the, what is it? The unit price, meaning just for $73,000.
Correct.
Right. Does that make sense? Right. Okay. Kind of, it's kind of like if you already have something made, you know, it doesn't take a lot to make it bigger.
Right.
Right. So I guess that's what I, I kind of see when I read the staff report. So thank you so much, Will. We'll take it out to a public comment. Public comment is open.
Peter Kaiser, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
On these calming on Hillby and some of the other streets. I think we have to be careful. If you're putting calming on the main thoroughfares in Seaside where people go like each day from home to work and back and shopping. You have to be careful if you're if you're actually preventing them from traveling properly from one place to another. It almost seems like there's every maybe 100 feet, there's a large raised part of asphalt there. So this needs to be reasonable. And of course, we want to have safe streets. But I think these things need to be reasonable. And if you're slowing everybody down on the main thoroughfares, it almost defeats the purpose. It's no longer a main thoroughfare if you almost have to stop every 100 feet. So please keep it within reason and still be thankful to him up here.
Thank you. Nothing further. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Public comment is closed. All those in favor using ruck sign voting, which is I. Nobody made a motion yet?
Oh, no one made a motion now.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve item L. Second.
Thank you for that. This probably moved in a second. On the question, and maybe that's what I was trying to get to. You got something on the question? Yes, sir.
Just on the question. The neighbors, the individuals that live on Hillby and San Pablo. If you go door, even block to block, they are very pleased and proud of all the little speed bumps for the safety reasons. And if you talk to residents in homeless areas, they would want safety. And that part of our responsibility, I hope, I believe, is safety of the children. And if we do this on that part of Sonoma, it slows down traffic, but also increases the safety of the children that are walking in those areas from Hams to the, to the school as well as in other areas. And I think that's the goal that we're trying to achieve, which is beneficial to all of us. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Councilmember Miller?
Thank you. And I certainly understand the, the need for that. I'm just concerned at the procedural process of this. I understand that it, that the argument is it could be a savings because we already have a contractor there. But I'm not convinced that that's, that's the case. So I'm voting no on this one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? I, I think I would, I got two points to make. Appreciate everybody's comments. You know, I got confidence in the city manager, his engineers saying this is a credible way of getting this done on, on that street, right? And so if they think it's, they don't need to go back out and it's a viable way to do it. And it's, it's legal and it saves the city money. Well, then I want to thank them for thinking through these things and, and doing those type of things. That's part of their responsibility too, is to look through and see where they can cut corners, so to speak, and processes. And get a value. Sometimes the value is not always saving the money. So I don't want to say it's always about money. But it's about time, effort and energy. So I want to appreciate them for their forward thinking. Then I want to go to someone says something about thoroughfares, main thoroughfares, and you slowing down traffic. Main thoroughfare, the definition of that is not how fast you go on that. That's not what the definition is. It means cars use it as opposed to other feeder roads, you know, residential streets, so to speak. But we have too many areas where people are speeding. And we finally done something about it on Hillby. And, and to be honest with you, you know, those humps slow me down a little bit, right? But it makes it safer for those people to live. Those kids that work, walk up and down those streets and those family members that walk up and down the street. And it's safer for when you have an accident. I'm sure it may take a while. It may take, you know, 12 months, a year, two years. But I'm sure the, the police department will see a reduction somewhere. And they'll be able to tell us, you know, a couple of fender benders, but they were going, you know, 20 miles per hour. When it used to be a couple of fender benders and the guy was going 35 miles an hour. And so it makes a difference. So I'm supportive of it. I share with the city manager before about, you know, the number of, what is it? Speed humps on there and other places as we go forward. But that is the engineer's call, right? Those are engineers' calls. So I think what we're doing is great. I think we have a commitment to the parents that send their kids to schools to slow down the traffic around those schools because we know that the sign that says what the speed limit is, is not always observed. And so I'm going to support this. All those in favor using ruck sign voting, which is I.
I.
Nays have the same right. Here one, any abstentions? Motion carries for one zero. All right. Next we go to item number eight, which is business item. Adopt a resolution approving the revised mayor's youth fund policy. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I will be presenting this item as I walk through the background for the mayor's youth fund. This might be a problem. Little bit of background on this. Provide supplemental financial assistance to seaside youth and youth serving organizations. And it is in line with our strategic plan. Is established in the early 1980s. It's funded annually by Green Waste in approximate amount of $60,000 a year. Applicants must show connection to reduce, reuse, recycle, and it's managed through a formal policy, which we're discussing tonight. Those applications are reviewed by staff and then it's considered by city council. Eligible applicants currently include individuals under 18 residing in Seaside. Nonprofit schools, community groups serving at least 50% seaside youth. And faith-based organizations are eligible, but for non-religious activities. Eligible activities currently in the policy include scholastic, athletic, music, environmental and art activities. Those activities shall support the green initiative. And again, the requests are to provide a municipal community benefit. Next slide, please. Contribution limits are currently 25% of the total cost, not to exceed $1,000 for individuals. Groups under 20, youth groups under 20, up to $1,500. And then groups over 21, over 21 persons in the group for youth is up to $3,000. Other notes, all applicants are limited to one request every 12 months. And then it requires a closing report form within 60 days of the activity. And the applicant must be in attendance at the city council meeting for consideration, the application. Next slide, please. Policy updates were made in 2011, 2012 and 2018. And recently, the council discussed making changes, reviewed and discussed further defining the scholastic school requests, defining the allowable and ineligible expenditures, updating environmental nexus terminology. And we did discuss at the last meeting contribution limits. Next slide. So in the policy that was in your packet, we have made an attempt to further define the scholastic parameters of this in response to increased requests aligning with the community schools model. Next slide, please. And so for the revised, revised policy, we have, this is the new section, which says funding requests coordinated through schools may be considered when project provides clear municipal and community benefits, request supplement, the request supplements, but does not supplant the school district funding. The activity involves collaboration with seaside businesses, organizations or city departments. And the application includes written approval from the school principal or authorized district representative. So this new section provides a little bit more of a guided parameter for applications and then city council consideration. Next slide, please. Allowable expenditures, there is no current section in the policy that discusses allowable expenditures, which has come up several times in conversation. With the exception of the funding can't be used to support religious activities and the funding cannot go directly to any individual. Next slide. So the new allowable expenditure section of the policy outlines several approved event program costs, equipment and uniforms directly supporting those youth activities, transportation and travel expenses tied to those eligible events, stipends and payments for qualified referees or contracted providers that support those youth events. And then materials and supplies advancing environmental sustainability, climate resilience, clean energy awareness, conservation, waste reduction efforts, community stewardship or civic engagement. And that is an expanded section, which I'll talk about here in just a minute. Next slide, please. It also includes an ineligible, these following expenses are not, not considered eligible, standard classroom supplies, textbooks, staff salaries, religious, political activities, personal gifts, activities, rewards, and food and entertainment unrelated to the program activities. Next slide. Council discussed in the environmental nexus and the existing language was determined to be insufficient this time. Next slide, please. And so the revised environmental language in the policy provides a further and enhanced broad breadth of recycle reuse and more than that, more than the standard recycle reuse cleanup to include waste reduction, recycling, reuse, pollution, pollution prevention, clean energy, solar power, education, water conservation, habitat restoration, community stewardship and other practices that support a healthy, sustainable seaside. So that environmental language has at least been updated in all the new sections, the allowable expenditures, the supplemental requirements and the evaluation process and criteria sections. Next slide, please. The application the application has been updated to reflect the new policy language. It requires separate answers on the new application for both the ties of the application to the environmental sustainability and climate resilience, and then also to the municipal community benefit. So there is a new section that applicants do need to fill out. School affiliated requests will require a signature for approval by the school districts prior to being accepted by the city staff for consideration by the city council. And then we've also updated the mayor's youth fund closing report accordingly. If this new policy is approved by the city council, online forms will be adopted. Next slide, please. With that recommendation, the recommendation to adopt the resolution approving the revised mayor's youth fund policy. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions for the dais? Councilmember Miller and then Mayor Porten.
Thank you. My question was in regards to the school signature. The school affiliated request requires signature approval. That's a slide 14. Is that, does it say who, who needs to sign that?
The policy says the school principal or a district authorized representative.
But right now, that, that's in addition to the, this is the new policy to be added to.
Yes, it would be in the new policy. Correct.
And then on, on slide 11. You, while you were talking, you said program activities, but on here it's outcomes. But I like activities better. To program outcomes, nor food and entertainment unrelated to program outcomes. To program outcomes, nor food and entertainment unrelated to program outcomes.
Yeah. If council feels the same way, activities probably gets the same result.
Kind of a small, minor thing, but I mean, the activity sounds more because program outcomes seems vague to me.
Staff would not oppose that change if council supports that.
That was my only two questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, uh, Mayor Portem.
He took care of that question regarding the signature.
Oh, okay, okay. Anyone else? Before we go out, I had a, a couple. First of all, well done. Well done. Uh, then I, I like the improvements for the environmental. So I appreciate those things being, um, talked about last time. Uh, let's go to, uh, five. Uh, slide five, please. And so we talked about, uh, applicants, uh, representative required at the council. What, what, what constitutes a, uh, representative? Just someone saying I'm representing them? And I'm not, I have no problems with that because I'm just saying, are we saying representative has to be, someone has to be here, uh, saying we represent them?
In, in the past, the applicant has been required to be in attendance at the meeting.
Yeah. I, I, I have an issue and concern with that because, uh, sometimes when we don't have them here, uh, that's because they're in school, they're in that activity. And then, you know, by habit sense, they may be in a family, at a family, uh, event or a family obligation, if that makes sense. So I asked the council to, to think about that. And then, um, seven. Uh, slide seven. I, I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not in there. Are you saying, um, increased funding requests for a school day programs aligned with, uh, community school models? Are you saying that's, that's, that could be supported with, with this?
No, that's just a statement of, of why we were, uh, trying to address further the scholastic parameters and cover the window of application.
I'm sorry. So we're, we're trying to, we're being clear by saying this, this, this shouldn't be funding school, community school models.
It isn't, this policy doesn't specifically, uh, outline community school model, but what it does is it provides additional, um, additional requirements for anyone from the school district, whether that be community school model or regular school district or, or, uh, school district to apply.
Yeah. Okay, okay. Yeah, I, I would just say on that, on that, the council really, really needs to think through that. I don't think, uh, anything that has to do with the community school model should be funded through the mayor's youth fund. We should, that should be a separate discussion and, you know, once they find out, you know, each school finds out, you know, what, what they think they think they should be getting support from the city. Uh, then it's up to the council to try to find that resources. But taking any money out of the mayor's youth fund is just, um, what is it? Uh, slicing the pie thinner? And then it, because, you know, you guys can imagine, it could be a lot of money used for each one of those schools and supporting each one of those schools. And then what happens is the only program that, not regular kids, but any program that's outside the school just loses money. So that's why I want the, the council to think about. Uh, going out to, uh, public comment, public comment is open.
Peter Kaiser, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yes. Uh, we, we need to be careful when they say climate resilience, that, um, some of these things would be, uh, leaning towards climate alarmism and exaggerated, uh, interpretation of, uh, you know, like when they go from, they were against global warming and now they changed the terms around. So we have to be careful. And, um, I'm hoping that some of this money would go to groups that actually train homeowners to properly use the, uh, you know, the recycle bin for, uh, you know, and not put stuff in the garbage, the trash can. And also how do they use the, you know, they, uh, solid, the, uh, the household waste from trimming vegetables? That goes in the yard trimmings. If there could be some kind of emphasis on this in case some people need extra education on that, because some people might get a little bit, um, you know, they, they, they're short on time. So they just put stuff in the trash and we need to make sure that that doesn't happen. It goes into the proper bin. And we can actually make soil from the yard trimmings and recycle properly with the proper numbers in the, uh, the triangles. And, uh, make, make the, the recycle system work properly. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. Um, slide seven. What you're presenting here is more than just funding criteria. The community schools models, which I guess we just still aren't getting, is modeled nationally recognized framework that transforms school campuses into full service hubs for education, health, civic engagement and family support. And in a city like seaside where our families disproportionately navigate economic pressures, housing instability, health disparities and limited access to enrichment. This model is not optional. It is essential. This slide correctly notes that the community schools emphasizes the whole child development. That means academic success, yes, but it also means emotional wellness, physical health, cultural belonging and community connection. This is not funding academics or the books, because I think there's a disconnect there. But it also means emotional wellness, physical health, cultural belonging. So all those extracurricular activities, it's just using different vernacular. These are the very foundations of safety, opportunity and long-term success for our children. So when you sit there and negate that, we're not understanding that model and how we are incorporated as a city of seaside into that. Because again, you have to be economically disadvantaged to be a community school. That is why it is only in seaside. Monterey don't got it. Marina don't got it. Seaside got it. Community schools cannot thrive in isolation. They require active partnerships between districts, nonprofits, community groups, and critically, the city itself. If our schools are being asked to become community hubs, then the city must strengthen the supportive policies ensuring funding pathways remaining, remain accessible, including the mayor's fund. So maybe we should call it something else and remove barriers that prevent nonprofits and youth-centered programs or community schools from operating during school day hours. And during school day hours could be, again, a auto body shop. Because the continuation school, which is Central Coast, may offer those for alternative options. Please keep that in mind. And if you're unaware of what community school models are and how the city is incorporated in that, please reach out to our representatives from MPUSD. We're supposed to have this close connection. You should all already be informed of this. This is not nothing new. We've got millions of dollars for this, but not all schools are fully funded. That's why that partnership is important. You have to come in, whether it's through the mayor's fund, whether it's through another revenue avenue. But we have to be open to collaboration. And I just keep hearing negativity. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, there is nothing further on Zoom.
I thank you so much. Here, no one else on approached the letter about public comment, public comment is closed. Uh, what is the will of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the item. Second.
I was about to move to second on the question.
Just on the question quickly. Is, I think seaside has the money because seaside was the only city that asked for the money initially, as far as the $60,000 that we have. And then I think, yeah.
Just, I appreciate you, but we're not talking about community schools.
Right.
Okay.
The, the overall money initially came to us. So I think the concept of what we're doing is positive, which is good. You all know why I felt it, but I think we gotta work together on stuff and I, I think this is one of those items, um. Uh, we have limited funds under this program and we're, we're doing the best we can in meeting the needs of all the youth that, all the groups that apply that are youth-driven. And I think that is very important. We are, we are just better defining what we're going to do is, is what I, I see. And I, I, this is not a deal breaker for me. I like when, um, a representative does show up, uh, because if we do have questions, it's nice that they're there. And two, is three thou, potentially $3,000. I think the application's about a 10-minute application on, on some applications that I've seen and their presence. It doesn't necessarily have to be the application as such. It could be one of 20 to 30 teachers or a parent that's involved with the club. Just somebody that can be responsive, but I have no major fight in that battle. I just, that's just my personal appreciation of that.
But a representative.
Yeah, it just didn't have to be a, you know, and it could be,
Okay.
Somebody from a different school. For like, I could, just someone that could answer a question.
It is anybody.
I mean, I'm just saying it doesn't have to be so narrow. It could be anybody within the process of the program. But that's just my little hope.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, council member Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I mean, uh, in regards to this, the applicant representative required at council meeting. Yeah, I mean, I wonder, you know, we also offer the Zoom option and I wonder if, you know, the, the applicant can be here or on the Zoom. I don't know if we put that into this policy because we don't know if we're going to continue Zooming, you know, forever, but they can attend even at home. They can attend on Zoom. So I'm wondering if that could be included or if that should be included. But I'm okay if not.
Yeah. I, I, I think staff can, can figure out, once they tell them that they need to have a representative, uh, in person or Zoom, people attend the meetings on Zoom all the time. So yeah, that makes sense. Anyone else? Uh, um, yeah, that, that's my only thing was about, you know, who, you know, because I know you always like them to be here. But if they can't be, what are we going to do? That's what I'm talking about now, right? So when it happens, we don't have to have a big discussion. So as long as they have a representative, uh, attend the meeting, meeting, Zoom or here, right? Uh, then, then the mess taken care of. Um, yeah, I didn't have any, let me, let me just go over mine.
Point of clarification, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so, so staff currently works with applicants when they do, uh, apply. We work with them and try to, um, work around their schedule for what council meeting they can attend. Uh, but we, we're happy to, to add, uh, a virtual option in the, in the, uh, in the policy as well.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it, attend a meeting could either be, you know, like I agree with Councilman Miller. I don't know how long Zoom is here. Do you have to write that in there? I mean, just attend the meeting. If they're on Zoom, that's a, that's a 10 in the meeting. Uh, I just think it was, you know, well done, updated. And so, uh, thank you so much. Uh, all those in favor? Use the red sign of voting, which is aye. Aye. Nay, nays have the same right. Abstentions? Uh, I have a motion here. Okay. He just didn't sound too enthusiastic about it. That's what that was. Uh, B. Adopt a resolution authorizing, um, the fin- finance director to appropriate $4 million in 2025 mid-cycle regional surface transportation program grant funding to the Broadway Avenue Complete Street Corridor Improvement Project Budget. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, for this item, we'll hear from Thomas Corman, our public workers director.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Portem and members of the council. So, yeah, this evening I'll be presenting on item 8B, which is adopting this resolution, uh, to authorize the finance director, uh, to appropriate the $4 million for the Broadway Complete Street project. So, uh, just a little bit of background. Uh, this actually started back in 2020, um, before I was, uh, on board with the city. But the city staff applied and received grants, uh, for design and construction, um, of the Broadway Com- Complete Streets program. And so what this entailed was basically the active transportation program, basically through local assistance, Caltrans, uh, and, and TMC, the regional surface transportation program. So there's a couple of programs in here. And then Measure X, which is county funds. Okay. So, and then, uh, so that was awarded and design began on that and continued and progressed until we are today. In July 2020, it, prior to that, it was known that the project cost basically was going to exceed what was already distributed or what was already granted to the city. So in July 2025, city staff was notified by TMC, a transportation agency in Monterey County, uh, for unaccounted RSTIP funds, those, those regional funds. Um, and there was an opportunity to disperse those to projects that were underfunded. So staff requested those funds. Um, I was at that meeting at Stan, at, at the TMC, uh, for the Broadway, uh, complete, uh, Broadway Avenue Complete Streets, a corridor project. And then on, uh, August 27th, uh, TMC board approved that. Okay. Um, and so that was $4 million additional funds to go towards the additional funds that were already granted back in 2020. So I'll go over the project scope and then we'll look at the finances for this. So what this is, is it, it, it is known as a road diet. As you know, uh, Broadway basically is four lanes in each directions. There are stop signs all the way up. Um, there's only one traffic signal in that, that, the, that corridor all the way up to General Jim Moore. So that, all those stops and the existing traffic signal will be replaced by roundabouts, uh, curb extensions, at the intersections to allow basically pedestrian crossings there prior to the roundabouts. The class two bike lanes, we'll take a look at what those sections, cross-sections will look like. And then crosswalk improvements, uh, for those curb and stack, uh, extensions. And then there's improvements in front of the school as well. So that's the safe routes to school improvements, which are the offsets, uh, uh, offset, uh, crosswalks, but the flashing beacons in vicinity of the school and accessibility for drop off and pickup of students. And so there's additional improvements up towards Yosemite, which are bikeway pavement, bike, before bicycles, pavement markings, and then also signage. So here's a couple of the, the renderings that you can see. This is, uh, closer down near Fremont, uh, at the lower section of Broadway. And you can see some of the striping improvements in there. It, it really won't look too much different, other than you go from four lanes to two lanes and you have basically a merged lane in there and then an extension off it. Where the real changes are is that you see up here, this is, uh, for example, the roundabouts here. Uh, and so this is Soto, uh, to Yosemite. And then we also have a section five I'm showing here, uh, Yosemite to General Jim Moore. And so this will really give it, it's very transformative. Um, in effect that it is traffic calming. There are no speed humps, but it visually, uh, narrows. Uh, and you still have two lanes in each direction. When the traffic volumes were, uh, counted for this, you know, four lanes in each direction isn't necessary. So the two lanes are adequate this, but allows and facilitates for the bicycles. Um, as you can see there, the bike lane, and then still allows for parking on each side of the street. So it's, 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 uh, actually it's a, a very favorable design. So here's a little bit of the milestones. Um, in June, uh, 2022, there was a resolution, uh, approving, uh, the project plans for Kinley Horn to begin designing that. Uh, the secret document was already approved in, uh, January 2023. Then in March, there were further project approvals and environmental documentations that was completed in March 2023. And then in May 2023, the, the city received the final design approval from CTC, uh, the California Transportation Commission. Then in June 2025, the plan specifications and estimates, sometimes we just refer to those, the PSNE were completed. In August, which I already mentioned, that was the TMC board approval of the additional $4 million in RSTIP funding for, excuse me, for the project. Uh, and then here we are in January 20, or January 2026, right around the corner. Uh, this goes basically to the, to the California Transportation Commission for approval, uh, the requisition for construction. So that's just that final approval to use the remaining funds that have already been accounted for, the 9.5. The remaining funds that have already been accounted for, the 9.5. 9.45 million for construction and then 1.1, 1.01 million for TMC. Public outreach, uh, uh, education and outreach. And so a part of that is, is true where the city staff intends to engage, uh, the layer associates for some of that public outreach. Um, and coming up in summer, 2026, uh. We ba- basically expect the project to go out to bid. So we're, we're that close. It, it might go out to bid a little bit, uh, closer, uh, at, at. At the, towards the, toward the end of basically spring, but, but, but we're gauging for that timeframe there. So just to recap with the project funding, um, other than staff time, uh, you know, of a city staff time, really. Uh, very little city funds has been used for this project. So, uh, you know, if we were to replace or add traffic signals all the way up the Broadway. The city would be paying the $12 million, the $16 million. You know, it's typically one to $2 million per, per, per intersection for, for, uh, signal improvements. So just to recap that project funding, that's 20, uh, in 2020, there was $12 million allocated from the ATP program. Also in 2020, there was another 600,000 from the RSTIP program. In 2024, uh, very small, but that was the measure, the measure X of, of 40,000. And in 2025, that was the August meeting, the RSTIP funding of a $4 million, bringing it to basically to the total. So our recommendation, the last step here is where we, we're asking for authorization. Basically for the finance director to appropriate that $4 million. Uh, the 2025 mid-cycle, um, RSTIP, the Regional Surface Transportation Program. To the Broadway Complete Streets Program. So. Yeah. And that, that's, that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Miller.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I didn't quite understand what you meant by if we have traffic lights at every, can you explain that?
So, so currently, you know, there's a lot of accident data on, on Broadway. I don't have that in front of me, but you know, currently. Some feedback here. So as you draw your up, there's a number of stop signs. So, so when it's dark, because it's four lane, you know, someone stops, you get a lot of rear end accidents or as you're crossing the street. If we were to convert those into signalized intersections, so have it signaled controlled. It's usually about $2 million per intersection. And so, you know, currently we just have stop control. We just have stop signs. So, so, you know, the way the CTC is moving and Caltrans is moving is they're moving towards this roundabout type. Approach. That we eliminate basically T-bone accidents, uh, and eliminate those. And you still will have side swipes. That occur when people enter, but we'll use that public education and outreach. That TMC will participate in and Valera Associates to educate people how to drive roundabouts.
Understand. I, I guess my question kind of was that if we, if we have, if, if, if we're already guaranteed. We already have 12 million plus 4 million. So is the project fully designed?
It is, yes.
Designed with Kimberly Horn?
It is, yes.
So my, my, my question then is that, I mean, I'm not saying to do this. I mean, this is hypothetical that if we put. In your example, if you put stoplights in every, we pay for that. We, that the four, that we, we don't get part of the 12 million?
No, we, we, we wouldn't be funded for that type of project. No, we're not funded for signal improvements along Broadway.
Wow. So we're being funded for this basically because we're putting in these, these roundabouts?
That's correct. Yes.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Okay. Cause I mean, I've had, I've, I've, I, I support it. I think it's great. I think it's wonderful, but I've, I've heard concerns that there are seven, I believe.
There are seven. Yes.
And some people might be concerned that that's. A lot, but.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if we're being funded based on that, then, then I think that's crucial for us. Thank you for answering my questions.
I, I would just ask that you will wait till they finish asking the question. And so we both can, so, so we all get track what's being said and what's going on. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Proton.
Uh, thank you. Uh, just. They'll be allowed some tweaks as it goes on, not as far as the, you say was a hundred percent. Designed, but there can be, you know, very small tweaks without changing. The appropriation as needed. Is that fair statement?
That is fair. Yes.
And then my last question would be, as far as the educational component, I guess, you're working with, um. MST Monterey, Monterey Slumus Transit. So that way everybody's on the same page and information. Is that?
That's correct too. Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else? Yes, Councilmember Burks.
Not sure if you'd know, but I know when we saw the different, um. Proposals, there was a couple of people specifically at the intersection where the roundabouts are going to be placed. That they were concerned how it affected their home. Do you know if those things had been addressed or any of the concerns that were brought up have been addressed?
My understanding is that all those have been addressed because they were concerned with basically egress to their property. Yes. Yeah. So, so the lines have been shifted so that they can accommodate. You know, exiting and, and entering their property. Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember, uh, Garcia Zol.
Yeah, thank you. Following what Councilmember Burks mentioned, there was a survey that went, that went out, right? Uh, regarding these roundabouts.
I believe that's true. I, I've heard some of the history, but so I can't be certain that, but, but my understanding there is a yes.
And I'm assuming that those survey responses were taken into consideration as well. Correct?
I would assume so. Yes.
Okay. How long does a project like this take if we bid out for possibly summer of 26?
So we will give this probably a six, because of the size of it, a six to eight week period. Um, we will review bids. Uh, typically we would award a project for, uh, four to six weeks later. Uh, after we review the bids, typically something like this because it has so many funding components. A, a couple of other agencies want to look at that as well. We bring that to council. After we ratify a contract, we probably get to construction. I, I want to say in September, maybe late August. Yeah.
And, and I'm probably getting too, too ahead of myself here, but.
Yeah.
I know Marina's Roundabout Project, they, they have like an engine task force as well that oversaw and. Was focused, um, on outreach with TMC, uh, spearheading this. Uh, or i- is that where the $1 million is, is going to go to, towards outreach and education, something similar to that?
I believe so. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, of course.
Yeah. So with it being starting potentially in August, September, which is the start of a school year, right in front of a school. Probably the largest elementary school in our seaside city. Um, is there going to be additional support for them, for the families that the staff been, when that's going on?
That, that's correct. Currently we're looking at a construction phasing plan. So as we've been discussing in the office, we've been looking at starting down. Towards, uh, Fremont and Broadway and then working up so we can miss that period. And that will be written into the specifications that the contractors are, you know, aware of basically those timing requirements.
Thank you.
Um, yes, thank you. Great, great. It's, it's been a while before, since we talked about it, particularly since we talked about it in full. This was more about just, um, authorizing the finance director to accept the additional $4 million. But it may, Mr. Seemager, may be an opportunity to, to discuss it again in full, uh, to bring the council up to speed. Uh, particularly with the phasing. Uh, because we talk about it. And it was a couple of questions, right? But, but. We really not, we really didn't talk about why we haven't the roundabouts. You talked about the T-bone and you talked about the accidents and, and things like that. Um, but it didn't get full measure of why, you know, it's not like you're just putting roundabouts in there to put roundabouts in there. It's about the, uh, my understanding is the Broadway is overbuilt, was overbuilt, maybe that has a relationship to the old Fort Ord. Um, but when you talked about overbuilt, what did you, what did you mean? Could you just explain a little bit more? I know what you meant. Could you just explain a little bit more?
Y- yes. So, so in short, basically the, the Broadway is able to handle a much, much larger capacity. You know, with parking on both sides and two lanes in each direction. Um, and, but it's mostly got residential streets on each side and the commercial is down, you know, towards Fremont. So it has a much higher capacity. And so that's what you get basically higher speeds on that. And then because of the sequence of, you know, uh, stop control, you get the rear end accidents because of, of the, the lack of lighting. At the intersections and the positioning of the stop signs. So. Shrinking it down to two lanes in each direction, you're going to get a little bit more of a, a neighborhood feel and slow down the cars. And then you'll keep the circulation going. Uh, so, yes.
Mm-hmm.
When we say slow down the car. Uh, you may not have that number, but we're talking about. From General Jim Moore all the way to Del Monte.
Yeah.
Slow down for an extra nine seconds, ten seconds. We don't have it. I, I know it's something like that, so I don't want to guess right now. We'll, we'll, we'll put it on the board. But I, I just don't, you know, sometimes you just say slow down. We're talking about, yeah, go a little slower. And the public here was going to take them 20 minutes to get somewhere. And yes, no, hey.
Right. Well, I, I.
Oh, I'm, I don't even have a mic on. I, I had to repeat all that.
Yeah. Uh, I, I think staff will, once the, uh, the phasing is ironed out, uh, and we have a public engagement plan. We will do a full presentation to city council and walk through more of the project details.
Yeah, cause I, I think we've done it before and, and I'd like the fact that people brought up, uh, about the surveys and it was some. Um, members of the public concerned with their egress ingress, uh, to not only their personal property, but to their nonprofits. And, and other, uh, businesses. And so, and those concerns have been, uh. Have been taken care of, my understanding.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right. I just want to get that background. I don't want to leave people who are just, you know, slowing you down, just be slowing you down. Uh, it's. All right. Uh, bringing it back to the, uh, here we go for public comment, public comments open.
Rosalyn Green, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. Good evening, um, Mayor, City Manager and Council. Um, I am still just a, a bit concerned. Um, it sounds like some of the. Challenges and concerns may have been addressed, but I don't know that. That has gone out to the community. I think that we, um, we still need to bring it out to the community. Uh, cause this is a huge ordeal. Um, I know that I am a grandparent that, um. Has the traffic issues, um, in the mornings. Um, specifically on Broadway, where I try to find a side street to take instead of going all the way to Yosemite. To get to D-Lamp and just thinking about narrowing, um, the streets to two lanes. Is a big concern, um, for me. And then also, um, for the, the residents that actually live off of. Um, Broadway, you have to enter their streets from Broadway. Um, how exactly will the roundabouts? Um, impact them, um, in getting home? We have a number of churches that also utilize so Broadway. Um, it, it's, it's important. And I think that, um. If these questions or concerns have been answered, that we should, um, present those again. Um, on a larger scale, maybe in another town hall. Um, and also, you know, just reiterating, surveys don't always reach everyone. Everyone don't always respond via survey. So in order to really, uh, maximize community voice, I think we have to look at other ways. To get input, um, from the community. Some folks may not even know what's going on until they actually see it happening. Um, and so, yeah, how do we get this information that this is what's coming up out to the community? Um, folks that, that may not be involved because they may be, you know, elderly and just stay in their homes. Or they may be working families that work, you know, a couple of jobs and may not be as engaged in, um, a city or community. Um, conversations as, um, some of us that are always here. So I'd love to, um. Engage a little deeper on this, um, before we actually, uh, proceed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Your Kaiser, you now have the floor to make public comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Yes, uh, I, uh. From the previous speaker's remarks and suggestions, and I, I think we need to be careful. Just like I was speaking about, uh, Hillview and Sonoma. And, uh, if we put calming on Ward Grove and Military, it looks like there won't be any. Thoroughfare without, uh, lots of speed bumps and so forth. And people get it needing to get where they need to get safely. And in a timely manner. But if you go from four lanes to, to just one lane each way and you add roundabouts, you have. Bike lanes and, um, maybe even, uh. Parking issues, uh, you have to be careful. And if, a way to test this is if you go over this.
Uh, Daisy, can you reset across? Daisy Robinson, uh, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. Um, definitely echoing, but not, not wanting to repeat what Ms. Rosalyn before me had said in her comments, but. Um, I myself am a lifelong resident of seaside and my home is located directly off of Broadway. Uh, and that's the only way I'm able to enter and exit to my house. Um, and so I think I have more questions than comfort. Um, one of my bigger stressors. Is being able to navigate the Broadway traffic in the mornings to take my son to King, um, the elementary school up the street. And I think by narrowing the, um, the streets down from four lanes to two is. Uh, isn't the best idea. I'm trying to imagine it and I think that'll give us more of a headache versus us being. You know, a little bit more efficient on time and all of those things. Um, and I'm only maybe seven blocks away from the school itself and it takes me some time. So I think narrowing the street down to two lanes will give. That's going to add probably another 15 minutes just to get him to school. Um. And so I just think, similar to what Ms. Rosalyn said, if we can just have more of. Um, maybe a town hall meeting with residents who actually live and navigate the Broadway street. Uh, and, and really allow us to raise our concerns and ask questions and feel. At least a level of comfort if this is going to take action, I think, um, that would be the best route to go. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, there's nothing further on Zoom.
Uh, thank you so much. Public comment is closed. Um. Uh, the city manager heard some questions and some concerns, uh, either you or the engineer can, can answer.
Yeah, I think, I think the city, city staff can have a town hall meeting. We can have, uh, a public engagement. Um, once we get to, to, to final, we're at final design, but once we get the phasing plan, we'll be able to have a meeting and explain to residents, business owners and stakeholders along the corridor. Uh, what the project actually does. We can have staff available to answer personal questions on individual property issues. Um, but we also can show, uh, we've got traffic modeling, uh, of how the project interfaces with the school. Uh, and so we, we can, we can show those models as well at the public meeting.
And I, I'll just go, uh, back a little bit and, and we had these meetings before. Haven't we reached out to every property owner on Broadway, including the churches? And the school district and, but that's what I said from the start, right? That conversation was, you know, 18 months ago, two years ago, and definitely right when ideal came up. And so we're always open to continue those conversations, but I just don't wanted to go out in the ether that we have not done that already. But it's always, um, uh, more information we could put out and to be honest with you, I was a little startled by the cost of it, $1 million. To make sure we do communicate and educate, uh, uh, the community members. Uh, and so that's in there. Um, but that only comes about if we move forward. And then I notice the manager will have, you know, this process starts. And then I notice the manager will have, you know, this process starts that communicative, uh, um, initiative in earnest, really. Uh, but I know we're going to have a lot of conversations with the community members and, uh, show them, you know, what we, what we see when we look at this, uh, potential project or this project. Uh, all right. So those are my comments. Is there?
Make a motion to approve item B. Second.
So probably move to second on the question.
On the question.
Uh, Mr. Councilmember Miller.
Uh, in regards to, um, um, some type of meeting, is it, is it possible to have that there at that location instead of having it here? Uh, and also is, I have a procedural question and my procedural question is, is tonight, this motion is just to accept the four million, it's my understanding, and not necessarily a final approval of the project. Is, are those two things true?
Through the mayor? Yes, this is to appro, is to approve the appropriation of funding. Uh, and we can, uh, identify locations along the corridor for a public presentation. We'll see if the fire, uh, maybe the fire station will let us, uh, convene at their location, which would be a, a good asset for Broadway business owners and property owners.
And one more question to the mayor. In regards to, uh, the procedural aspect of this, is, will this come back to the council for a final approval?
Yes.
That was all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I, you know, and, and I appreciate that. A, a lot, it's just a lot of these questions that you guys raised took it away from what we're doing tonight. It's just talk about accepting the money. Uh, and so, no, this is not the final approval. This does not mean we're not going to talk about it eight or nine times. I think the engineer already said the request for proposal has to be approved. It has to go out and all those eight or nine different steps. Uh, but I would say when you're talking about some type of, of public meeting, I wasn't talking about, the council had to be there, right? So, so that, that creates logistical hurdles. But part of this is the normal procedures where you continue to meet with the community, community members, wherever they may want to meet at, uh, and, and keep the conversation open. So by no means is this the last time it's going to be here. I think that was, uh, pretty clear. Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor of, of, again, authorizing the finance director to appropriate the four million dollars? I want to question. Usually, all those in favor, use the sign of voting, which is aye.
Aye.
Nays have the same right. Abstentions, hear nuns, ayes have it motion carried. See, adopt a resolution authorizing the acquisition of land for Monterey Salinas Transit District and authorize the city manager to execute all documents for the development of a park with transportation amenities located within the campus town planning area for two hundred and seventy thousand dollars plus, plus costs to be fully reimbursed by the campus town developers through the public benefit contribution. Uh, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This item will be presented by City Attorney Sherry Damon.
Uh, thank you, um, Mr. City Manager, uh, Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public. Uh, this item requests your authorization to acquire approximately 1.62 acres from the Monterey Salinas Transit District. Next slide, Rosa. So as an overview, the property in question is located at the northeast corner of the campus town planning area on the corner of Colonel Durham and Seventh Avenue. Um, on the map here, you can see that little green area in the upper right-hand corner of the campus town planning area. It's approximately 1.62 acres and the acquisition price is two hundred and seventy thousand dollars plus costs. Sorry, it's not bigger, but we'll go to the next slide here. And it's going to be funded through the public benefit contribution that is being provided by the campus town developers. So there will be no general fund impact. Next slide. So here's a little bit better a map showing the planning area of the campus town, um, specific plan area. Um, the circle on the upper right-hand corner is parcel in question. You can see what it looks like on the ground. Again, these are, you know, just small pictures, but designed to give you an idea of the, uh, unrefined status of this property. There's an old building on it and some hardscape. Um, ultimately, those buildings will be taken down and removed as part of the city's demolition of phase two, the Hammerhead Buildings. Next slide. So the terms of the acquisition, uh, this is an as-is purchase of the property. It's 1.62 acres. Um, the purchase price is two hundred and seventy thousand dollars plus cost. Those plus costs and the reason they're not more specifically identified is because there are escrow fees and other fees that we don't know exactly what those are until we get into escrow. We estimated, um, less than thirty thousand dollars for those. But all of those additional costs would also be covered through the public benefit contribution by the, um, campus town developers. There will be, and there is a deed restriction that comes with this property. It, um, limits the uses of this property to transportation oriented uses, which is why we've indicated that the park amenities will have transportation oriented amenities as well to satisfy that deed restriction. Um, and again, there's no general fund impact. Next slide, please. So when we talk about the park facility, it would be a more multipurpose park facility, um, with the public park in the middle. So think about public park in the middle and this isn't exactly it. It will be planned out as part of, um, the improvement plan for phase two of Campus Town. And transportation infrastructure that might be included would be public parking, uh, bus stop, uh, electrical vehicle charging, solar panels, potentially. See, there's an example of that on the lower, uh, picture and maybe bicycle repair stations. All transportation related amenities designed to satisfy the conditions of the deed. Next slide. So in terms of our strategic plan alignment, and we have included that here, um, pillar two, our vibrant local economy rounding out and accelerating mixed use and commercial development of the entire overall campus town area, enhanced physical infrastructure, really diversifying our park amenities, making sure that we have, um, contemporary electric vehicle charging stations, solar panels, parking, the things necessary that meet all of those, um, enhanced physical infrastructure requirements. And finally, pillar five, community safety and quality of life for the high-quality recreational facility. Next slide. And with that, we are requesting that you adopt the resolution to acquire the property as presented. And I'm available for questions.
Uh, thank you so much. Uh, any questions for the dais? Uh, Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, was this property appraised?
Yes, thank you for that question through the mayor. Um, the property was appraised. It was appraised at four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And the purchase price reflects the substantial reduction for the demolition because the appraised price was for vacant land, not for land that had a dilapidated building and removal items.
So the appraisal was four hundred and seventy and we're purchasing it, uh, proposals for two hundred and seventy, so two hundred thousand dollars less than what appraised that. And, and is the removal of the building roughly around the two hundred thousand? Is that the staff's thinking?
So the staff used the most recent demolition numbers to forecast what we thought the demolition was. That actual forecast is about a hundred and seventy thousand plus a contingency amount of another thirty thousand to address things that might, yes.
But you're confident that this is, uh, that the property is worth. I mean, if, if it's appraised at four hundred and seventy, then surely that we're getting a good deal at two hundred and seventy. That was all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Yeah. Uh, just so, so we're clear, appraised at four seventy and we believe the cost to get it leveled and control it is about four seventy. It's, we're, but we're paying two seventy for it. It's about a hundred and seventy thousand to take down the buildings and another thirty thousand to get it in the condition you want it in.
We forecasted two hundred thousand to bring it to the vacant land standard. So yes, the total value to the property would be four seventy.
So it's about even?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to establish that. There's, there's nothing to run, run back away. What we want to do, we want to control that property inside of our, uh, campus town, uh, area and turn it over. What's going to be now is a park and that's the agreement with MST. So it, it could be a, uh, what a bus depot or something there, right? Or MST could have put a whole bunch of different things over there. So I want to appreciate, uh, staff, city manager and the city attorney for, for making sure we were able to, to negotiate and grab this parcel and turn it to a nice looking park for our, our residents. Uh, taking it out to the public, public comment is open.
Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make public comment.
Thank you. Uh, I, it's exciting to see that we're actually moving towards the general plans, like for this area. Um, so in the financial or the, the report, it says the total estimate cost could be three hundred and five. I'm assuming that doesn't include the demolition, um, which we're offsetting by the fund that Bakewell is giving us. Is that the two million that's being upfronted? Is that the cost of what they will pay us to take on that property? Because I'm, I'm, I know that that, that hasn't been finalized. So I just want to understand, like, how that demolition is going to happen if it's not included in this financial impact? Like, if it doesn't work out that way, like, will it impact our general budget at that point in order for us to actually complete the project? I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Susan Schivoni, uh, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council and the public. Um, I think this is great. Get a park. Anytime you can have a park, I'm so happy. Um, and I think it's well worth the money and it's at the end of the development up there. So it's, it's a nice placement and I'm with the mayor. Grab it before something else is put in there and you can control it. Um, my only request is please keep trees shade, carbon catchers, and it's good for the kids. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, there's nothing further on Zoom.
Thank you so much. Uh, here are no one else, here no one else. Uh, public comment is closed. Uh, bringing it back to the dais, what is the will of the council?
Move approval. Second.
They probably moved in second. Uh, on the question, I did, I did have a quick, uh, comment. I think, I think the city manager heard about the trees. Uh, yeah, we don't want to end up with just, you know, and I, and I, and I know that wasn't a concern of yours. You was always going to have trees over there, but I thought it was a good comment about, uh, parks and trees. All those in favor, use the red sign voting, which is aye.
Aye.
Nays have the same right. Abstentions, hear nuns, ayes have it motion carried. Item number nine, council members' requests, nine A, new council members' requests. Um, uh, Mr. City Manager.
Uh, yes, the, we have one item for new request, uh, to discuss. That's consider a resolution opposing offshore drilling by Councilmember Garcia Rosal.
Uh, take your ninety seconds.
I'll give you thirty. Uh, so the Trump administration released a draft plan to open leases of offshore drilling along the coast of California. So this resolution is a resolution that many other cities across California are doing to stand against offshore drilling. And I think us being a coastal community, we should also show our support and opposition. Uh, we should show our opposition towards, uh, these new proposed leases, which is a five-year plan. That was twenty-eight seconds.
Twenty-eight seconds. Uh, Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I a hundred percent, fully one hundred percent support this. I, I demand that the, uh,
uh, that's, that's all we need.
Thank you.
That's all we need.
Add more, but okay.
No, I know, I know you do, but we can't discuss it. So all I'm looking for is for people.
That they're going to drill.
It'll, yeah, no, it'll come back and be on the agenda. And so you have your, you can take as long as you want to say you support it, but, okay. All right. So the city manager seen that. Okay. Uh, B, follow-up on previous request, uh, community service grant process, uh, city manager?
Uh, yes, uh, follow-up on a previous request for Mayor Pro Tim's, uh, request of, to discuss the community social services grant process. Staff anticipates placing that on the January eighteenth agenda.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Since our last meeting, I was able to participate in the turkey giveaway at, with Pastor Lusk. And, um, I feel much stronger having lifted multiple, um, turkeys. They gave out a lot of turkeys and it was a good event. And, um, that is what I've done since the last meeting, um, outside community. Thanks. So thank you so much.
Uh, let's go to, um, who was next? Councilmember, uh, Burks. I'm sorry, city manager. I'm thinking about two things right now.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just have a few. Uh, city staff had a meeting earlier this week with leadership from Monterey Peninsula College to continue partnership and collaboration discussions, mostly centered around the college's plans for their public safety training center. Um, last night I attended the December meeting of the Homeless Commission where the commission presented various individuals and organizations with challenge coins to commemorate their efforts to develop solutions and reduce the challenges of homeless in Seaside. Uh, unfortunately, due to technical issues, uh, the video for the meeting was not broadcast. So staff will, will try to ensure that the photos from the event will be featured in an upcoming newsletter or, uh, through social media. And then lastly, staff had several meetings, uh, over the last week with various AI and technology vendors to demo various platforms, the software and improvements that can be made to improve process and efficiency, uh, and customer service. And that's it for tonight.
Thank you. Councilperson Burks or, oh, Miller, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Miller, Councilman Miller.
Uh, thank you. Uh, it was a sad day on Tuesday, but we were all at the, um, memorial for Helen Rucker, which was, uh, nice to be together, but for a sad occasion. And, uh, that was, uh, all I had to report. Thank you.
Councilperson Burks?
Yes, I was able to give out some turkeys with the city attorney and the mayor and other people in our community. Um, thank you to Pastor Lusk for his annual two-day Thanksgiving basket giveaway. And yes, uh, being part of, um, Mrs. Rucker's services was beautiful. And so I'm happy that I was able to be there to celebrate her, uh, life and her contributions.
Councilperson Garcia?
Yeah, I'm going to keep it very light as well. Um, I attended the region monitoring board meeting. It was a very light agenda. One of the things I want to highlight is Regen entered in a partnership with Central Coast Community Energy. It's a short-term agreement with Central Coast Community Energy to figure out ways in how to best use our landfill gas. So the board approved that. I also attended the art reception at City Hall on the twenty-first of September alongside Council, uh, Councilmember Pacheco. We handed out certificates. Well, I did, because you've already told me to, uh, hand out certificates, so.
You're a better picture kind of guy than I am.
Um, and I also attended my Monterey Water Board meeting. That was also a short meeting, which followed with an annual dinner that I could not make. One of the things I do want to highlight is the great work that Regen, that Monterey Water continues to do. Most importantly, on Tuesday, they held a co-digestion project ribbon cutting, which is supposed to be a way for the agency to save money on, um, electricity and produce its own electricity onsite via bio, uh, biogas. Uh, so that was cool. And then on Tuesday, I attended the, uh, memorial service for Helen Rucker as well alongside, I think all of us were there. So other than that, I don't have anything else to report about.
Thank you. I, I attended the, um, Tana Cruz grand opening on West Broadway. The, um, ceremony was well attended by business owners in the surrounding area as well as, uh, some residents. Uh, their management team expressed their positive uh, comments relate to city staff and their cooperative effort in, uh, that building moving forward and opening. Tended phosphorus park cleanup at Capra. Um, obviously, we all know that phosphorus efforts are always appreciated and they do have a dramatic impact on the community. Tended the farmer's.
Tended the farmer's market. Obviously during the winter season, it's a little bit slower, but it's continuing to service residents, continuing to to encourage residents to support the weekly market. We, Councilperson Garcia and myself again tended the art commission and a lot of young people there and adults there receiving recognition for their works that you see throughout the gallery. And that's appreciated. Wanted to acknowledge Sandra Gray for and her team's efforts for that. And as mentioned, on, you know, numerous times on Tuesday, we attended the ceremonies services for Mrs. Rucker. I think that I think all of us, and, and I know she would want us to encourage the residents of seaside to, you know, fight for what they believe in and get, take an active role in the moving forward seaside. Even if it's, you know, cleaning a park, picking a piece of litter up or getting someone to vote and dragging them to the voting polls. I think that would, that was part of her legacy as such as, as well as a many page document of all the things that she had an impact on. I would stretch more, but I, I think I have now waiting for the mayor to return to add his words of wisdom to conclude this meeting. Any other great thoughts, any experiences? Any exciting moments of, of seeing none? I have, I'm going to shut up and we'll wait for the mayor to conclude the meeting before we go to closed session. Try. Oh, I see. Perfect. Okay. All right. I think you guys see up there, we're closing the meeting in honor of Mr. Paul Mugen. I knew him, met him probably close to twenty, twenty-four years ago when we first served together on seaside planning commission. A wonderful man, wonderful family man, loved his wife, loved his kids and just worked hard to, you know, make them proud and, and within this community. And so he's a good, a good person. And so I was had sad to hear of his passing. I know he had some health challenges. I believe he was fighting cancer. And, and he fought a good fight, as they say. And so, but a lot of people appreciate him. And a lot of people will miss him. I'll be one. And we just want to extend a condolences to the family at this time. And so, you know, we just want to remember him and, and make sure we, you know, dishonor him the way he honored the citizens of seaside with the hard work that he did for the time that he was here. And thank you so much. And we'll move on to item eleven, which is closed session. The city attorney will read us into closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. The council will meet in closed session on a matter of public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven. Position being evaluated is the city attorney. They will have a conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point six. The agency negotiators are Greg McDaniel, city manager, Samantha Socrani, human resources director. Employee organizations are the seaside police officers association, the seaside firefighters association, the seaside public safety managers association, the seaside city employees association, the seaside managers employee association, the nonrepresented, non exempt confidential employees, the nonrepresented exempt confidential employees, the executive employees, the unclassified exempt employees and the unclassified non exempt employees. They will also have a conference with legal counsel pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine D two on two matters of potential litigation. With respect to report out, anticipated report out. I am not anticipating a report of actionable action taken this evening in closed session.
Thank you so much. Public comment is open on our closed session items.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or press star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mr. Mayor, there's nothing further on Zoom.
Thank you so much. We will move into closed session.
Thank you. Thank you. We will um have the city attorney, we'll read aside a closed session and report on any reportable actions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. The council met in closed session do one matter of public employee performance evaluation. The title was City Attorney. That evaluation was given. They had a conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point six with all of the bargaining units of the city. Instruction was given to the city's negotiators. And finally, they had a conference with legal counsel pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine D two on one matter of potential litigation. And they received an update on that matter. And that concludes my reading.
Thank you. Our next regular scheduled meeting is December eighteenth two thousand twenty five, five p.m. here in the City Hall. We'll go to item number twelve is adjournment. There be no further business on this agenda. This meeting is adjourned. Good night.